Okay, good afternoon. We are back. So if members of the committee and agencies and those who are participating, as panelists, please turn on your cameras. We will get started on bill number 21-0125, Trespass Towing Revisions. We are going to first start with an introduction from the bill sponsor and whoever he has that is helping him present this bill. From there, we are going to go on to the agency reports. And then from there, we are going to go on to public testimony. We do have a slight time constraint as we have to be off by 5:00 for another hearing in a different committee, and so that's when our time slot ends. So if everybody can try to keep it as brief and to the point as possible, I would appreciate that. I will now turn this over to Councilman Dorsey to introduce this bill and any proposed amendments that he will have to this bill so that we can all start the conversation from where we stand today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I sincerely hope we're here nowhere close to 5:00. But I appreciate you calling the hearing, scheduling this. Thank you so much for your partnership and the communication that we've had. I want to go on and thank the council president, the mayor, the city administrator, and their respective offices staff. I also want to thank the reporting agencies, as well as the trespass towers and property management folks I've been in discussion with, especially Charles Parrish on behalf of the towers, and Grayson Wiggins at the Maryland Multi-Housing Association, as well as members of the general public who, you know, have voiced their concerns about towing to me over the years as I've been involved in this subject. The committee has amendments that were distributed by staff. Both amendments for me and should have an amendment as well from the council president. I'm going to take a few minutes to give as brief as possible an overview of a kind of multifaceted bill. And I'm going to speak about it as if those amendments are incorporated and what it would do with them. Because as I've been through this process, it's been kind of fluid and these amendments just make a handful of modifications here and there to address just a handful of concerns. First, just kind of on background, I want to make clear kind of what this bill does and does not address in a general way. This bill addresses trespass towing. If you're not exactly clear on what that means, it's what in the state code is referred to as towing from private lots. It does not include towing from the public right-of-way, for example, for parking in a bus stop or another no-stopping tow-away zone, or towing of cars from abandoned, that are abandoned on city streets, or from police scenes for crashes, or peak hours parking restrictions, none of that. It also doesn't impact consensual towing, which would be like at the request of the vehicle owner, for example, when your car won't start and you would have it towed to a shop. This bill strictly addresses non-consensual towing by private towing companies that are contracted by private property owners or managers, such as shopping plazas, fast-food establishments, apartment complexes, or other generally accessible private area where the owner has a right to have trespassing vehicles removed from the premise. This is already governed by an extent to, by, to an extent by the state of Maryland, as is done in many other states as well. But as in many other states, local jurisdictions go above and beyond what states do. This is already the case here in Baltimore City, as well as in many other jurisdictions, including in Montgomery County, who I regard as a national standard bearer. U.S. Perg, we have, who, we have, and we have a representative from Montgomery County. We also have a representative from U.S. Perg, who recently published a national study on the subject that looked at states and local jurisdictions and what they do or don't do, and where they come up short. This bill, in short, puts forth measures to close the gaps in consumer protections that that report highlights, and does so more or less across the board by enacting measures that are already in place here in Maryland, particularly in Montgomery County. I want to go into some of the detail about what this bill does, and again, I'm going to try to just be as quick as I can with this. The state of Maryland requires that trespass towing companies either accept credit cards or have an ATM on premise. This bill goes a step further and requires that they accept credit cards outright. This means people who don't have the cash on hand or in the bank to retrieve their vehicle or pay to, or to pay a drop fee will have more options to make it more possible for them to get their car back. This is especially beneficial to consumers in the case of drop fees because while a tower has to let you pay to, pay a drop fee to release your vehicle from a towing progress, what they don't have to do is wait for you to go to an ATM or find somebody to borrow cash from. The time that it takes for you to get from where your car is to the towing office ATM ends up costing you double what you would pay for a drop fee. So accepting credit cards will save people a lot of money. Also regarding drop fees, this bill and the amendments include a few other provisions. Right now, a drop fee is allowed to be 50% of the towing rate. With Baltimore City allowing among the highest rates anywhere, so is the drop fee. This bill drops that down to 25% of the towing fee. With the $250 towing charge maximum in this bill, not only will we be in line with other jurisdictions for towing charges, yet still among the highest anywhere, but that drop fee will drop down to $63 max. The bill also puts some basic limitations on what, when a drop fee can, can and can't be charged. Right now, basically, as soon as a tower lays hands on your car, lays hands on your car or puts chains around your tire, basically, it's theirs. This bill says you have to at least have lifted two wheels off the ground. And the last thing on drop fees comes from the council president saying that if a vehicle owner interacts with a tower while they're in progress of the tow, at the time when a person could potentially pay a drop fee, even if they don't end up paying that drop fee, the tower has to provide the vehicle owner documentation, basically a receipt saying that that interaction occurred, so there's a record of it. A big part of this bill is all about transparency and accountability and checks and balances. Other provisions in this bill related to documentation seek to create parity between the records that must be kept internally by towing companies and what they need to include on receipts. So we're all on the same page at all times, and we can look into complaints when people bring them to us by having all of the information immediately available to us. Those receipts will also include, need to now include an email address for the Trespass Towing Board and a record of who requested or authorized the specific vehicle to be towed and how they made that authorization. With respect to disclosing those authorizing individuals, the bill also allows, with amendments, also allows a system to create anonymity for those people in order to protect them from any potential retribution. Because I heard loud and clear from the towers, and particularly from the property management side of things, the fear that somebody whose towed car could be towed, you know, might come back and, and want to take action, you know, retributively. This disclosure provision is also really directly related to the final provision in the bill that I regard as being of the greatest importance and impact, placing constraints on the practice of patrol towing. Montgomery County, for example, strictly limits patrol towing to the hours of 2:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., no exceptions. This bill sets late-night hours similarly during which patrol towing is permitted. However, we also, with amendments, will provide towers and property managers a significant amount of leeway, allowing the practice of patrol towing during other hours so long as the towers seek and receive confirmation from an authorized property manager prior to performing the tow. This significantly limits the ability for towers to act in aggressive manners, in an aggressive manner, and prey in a predatory fashion. I believe the provisions of this bill, and particularly with the amendments, are reasonable, common sense protections for consumers, but which are fair to towers and property managers, and bring us in line with best practices, and for which I ask the committees favorable report. I appreciate you allowing the time to present the bill in such detail, and I also appreciate you now giving your attention to several guests I've invited to assist me in presenting this bill. I've asked each of them to take just about three minutes. So first up, I'd like to welcome Emily Scar with Maryland Perg.
Thank you, Councilman. I'll try not to use all three, but you never know. Mr. Chair, my name is Emily Scar. I'm the Director of Maryland Perg, the Public Interest Research Group. We are a statewide, nonpartisan, nonprofit with grassroots members, and we're based here in Baltimore. I want to thank the councilmen for introducing this bill and the co-sponsors on the committee, including my councilman, Councilman Conway. I don't believe we have actually met yet. But councilmembers Burnett, Ramos, and Torrance as well, and I hope the whole committee will vote in favor. So the report that Councilman mentioned, we released in May, which covers issues with towing and policies used throughout the country. And as you mentioned, Baltimore City and Maryland in general are ahead of the curve, but certainly there are gaps that this bill seeks to close. To be clear, I am not against towing. I don't believe it's okay for drivers to park where they shouldn't. As my husband can attest, I get pretty angry when they do, especially when they're my husband, which is more often than he should be. And when drivers park improperly, towing is totally appropriate as long as the fees and consequences are reasonable. And but we have seen considerable abuse in this area. We have consumer complaints. I got more response from this report from the general public than I often do, and we release a lot of reports. And as, I'm not going to go through all the provisions, but just to highlight a couple. As Councilman Dorsey said, we have some of the highest rates for towing and max caps that we should. So lowering that is really important. I think we could go even lower than we are set at the 250, but it's a strong start. Likewise, limiting patrol towing is a really needed consumer protection. 14 states strictly prohibit patrol towing completely. So putting these time limits on and making sure there's consent from the business owners is really important. And then, as the councilman referred to, updating the receipt information to add increasing transparency will also make it a lot easier for accountability and oversight for the towing board and just make their job easier and more efficient. In addition to the provisions outlined in the bill, I think that the towing board should set a cap on daily storage fees. I think that's set to them for as far as regulations. Right now, under state law, it's $30, but lowering that to 15 or 20 is in line with what a lot of other states are doing and would be another way to help low-income consumers and all of us make towing more affordable. So I think particularly, you know, folks think we need certain guardrails for all industry, and I think this bill is, does just that. It's ensuring that people who do something wrong face consequences, but that they are reasonable and make sure that consumers have basic protections in the marketplace, which is what Maryland Perg believes in. So with that, I just urge the committee to have a favorable report.
Thank you, Emily. I'd like to now go to Tracy Rovani from the Montgomery County Office of Consumer Protection. And I really want to thank Tracy for being here with us today. Just so you understand, where Baltimore's trespass towing operations and oversight is conducted by the Trespass Towing Board, that function is performed by the Office of Consumer Protection in Montgomery County, and I think they do an excellent job. So thank you for being here with us, Tracy.
Thank you. So my name is Tracy Rovani. I'm the Investigative Programs Administrator for the Montgomery County Office of Consumer Protection. As Mr. Dorsey mentioned, our agency regulates trespass towing businesses through Chapter 30(c) and 31(a) of the Montgomery County Code. Chapter 31(a) is the one we use that requires towers to be registered with our office. And Chapter 30(c) establishes minimum standards for towing operations and disclosures by towers and property owners. The bill under consideration here today is very similar to Montgomery County's Chapter 30(c). Trespass towing is a unique industry. If unchecked, it just allows a business to use its own discretion to remove a vehicle from private property, drive it to a remote location, and only return it to the rightful owner after payment of a fee. A car owner can only then challenge that payment after the fact. And as Ms. Scar mentioned, you know, it is very important to make sure that property owners have the right to control and restrict the use of the property by parkers. So this is a balancing act. Montgomery County did ban patrol towing a number of years ago, and with the exception of certain early morning hours, the tow must come with written authorization by the property owner to tow an improperly parked vehicle. The property belongs to them. They have the right to control it. Therefore, they should exert that authority by providing that authorization. Our law too requires that tow companies accept credit card payments and also sets maximum rates for complete and incomplete toes and for daily storage. Finally, our law requires the receipt to provide certain minimum information regarding the tow, including the circumstances leading to the tow, and discloses how consumers can complain if they believe the tow was predatory, unauthorized, maybe due to insufficient signage or somehow otherwise violates county law. Since 2013, and that disclosure points to us. And so since 2013, which is what is available for our complaint history, our agency has fielded over 780 complaints by consumers regarding trespass towing in Montgomery County. Montgomery County's law has allowed for property owners to control improper and illegal parking. It has allowed for adequate disclosures of the conditions of the tow, and it has increased consumer protections, and it has also leveled the competitive field amongst towing companies. When all towers are following the same set of rules, then there is, it allows the small guys to be able to compete with the larger guys. And in Montgomery County, our towers range from single-truck sole proprietors to large multi-truck companies, which provide the consumer-requested toes, the police-requested toes, as well as the trespass towing services. I want to thank everyone for the opportunity to be able to be here and discuss the impact of our towing law and its improvement to towing operation in Montgomery County. You're up muted, Mr. Dorsey.
Sorry. Thank you, Tracy. I appreciate it. Thank you so much for helping to present this bill with me today and for sticking around in case the committee members have any questions. Finally, the last person I've asked to help me present this bill today is Marceline White from Maryland Consumer Rights Coalition, who I can credit with bringing, helping me to be aware of Montgomery County's really excellent work that they've been doing. Maryland Consumer Rights Coalition does excellent work here in Baltimore City and throughout the state to help protect consumers. So thank you, Marceline. You're on.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey. Good afternoon, Chair and members of the committee. Again, I'm Marceline White. I'm the Executive Director of the Maryland Consumer Rights Coalition, MCRRC, and MCRRC advances economic rights and equity through research, policy advocacy, direct service, and education. We've got 8,500 individual supporters, about 1,000 of them, about 1,000 of them are in Baltimore City where our office is located and where our staff live and work as well. We are here in strong support of the Trespass Towing Bill. I appreciate the comments from Ms. Rovani and from Ms. Scar. I simply want to add, to put this into context, as we all know, the past two years led to a health and wealth crisis across the country, but particularly in Baltimore City. From our direct service work, we are seeing huge increase in calls, people facing eviction and facing foreclosure, as well as the need for food security. And I just want to place this in the context that what these bills do is it looks at egregious and punitive fines and fees. And I think what this does is it moves forward and strikes an appropriate balance. It still recognizes the needs of business owners to make sure their customers have a place to park, of property managers, but it does reduce the fees from some of the highest to a little less high for consumers. It also modernizes the system so that people can use credit cards, both at the time of a drop fee as well as at the impound lot. And we do know so many of our families are working paycheck to paycheck. They may not have the money in their ATM, but they can put it on a credit card in order to get their car, which of course they need to continue to work and take care of their family. So we think that it provides important economic rights. It helps at a time when many are struggling in our city. And also, it creates stronger protections by addressing the issue of patrol towing, which is non-consensual, and as we've seen in other places, can create perverse incentives to aggressively tow people without these kinds of protections. I think the caps and parameters that have been set out in this bill do limit the practice so that it still can be used, but is not creating these kind of unfair and perverse incentives we've seen in the past. And it does create more transparency and creates a more level and clear playing field among towing companies as well. So for all of these reasons, we thank Councilman Dorsey. We thank the co-sponsors, and we are to a favorable report. Thank you.
Thank you, Marceline. Thank you, Mr. Chair and committee members, for allowing me and my guests to be able to do this initial presentation of the bill. We're all very happy to take any questions as we may have.
Okay, yes. And so just so everyone knows, we're going to ask questions to to the bill sponsor and, and his guests, and then we're going to move on to the agencies. So if you have questions for the agencies, please hold them until, until that portion of the hearing. I see a hand raised. Councilman Castella.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilman, I had a quick question. I'm blanking on the name of the term, but where, is trespass towing, does that, that refers to any hour of the day, right?
Yeah, trespass towing is the practice of non-consensual towing by private towers from privately-owned parking facilities to the trespass towers' private lots. And done, and is done on a contractual basis between the property owner or manager and the towing company, between whom there can be no exchange of money. It's just a contractual agreement for this tower to be the, the tower for this particular lot. And it can occur at any time of day or night.
Right, but there's no exchange of money between the tower and the private lot owner, or?
Right. The, the exchange of money is only by the person who's being, who has been towed to get their car back from the tow.
Oh, so if I owned a private lot, I would contract with Joe's Towing Company? And I would say, hey, Joe, here's the signs on my lot. And go ahead and monitor the lot. And if you see cars that don't have the placard or the hang tag, tow them to your lot. And then if Kelly gets towed, she calls up Joe's Towing, and Kelly pays Joe's Towing to get her car back. Does that sound right?
That sounds right.
Got it. And then the bill prohibits that, that practice from occurring during certain hours?
So to be really clear, the bill would say that exactly as you described it, Joe's can come through the lot and simply identify within these kind of parameters, such as the one you just used as an example, like lack of a hang tag, right? Joe's comes through and they see a car that doesn't have a hang tag, they tow the car. That can happen under this bill between the hours of 2:00 a.m. and 7:00 a.m. Outside those hours, Joe's comes through and sees the hang, sees the car. It doesn't have a hang tag. They then call you, the property manager, and they say, I see a car on your lot that doesn't have a hang tag. And you say, great, I'm giving you my consent for you to tow that vehicle. And then they tow the vehicle.
So the consent is given verbally?
The bill does not specify a particular means. I'd be interested to hear from our guests from Montgomery County, who specified that in Montgomery County, the consent must be given in writing. It honestly didn't occur to me that it had to be, you know, that that there be any reason that we had to have it in writing, you know, my mind, you make that call. But it also, it also, in this bill, requires a disclosure of the means by which that consent was given. So on the receipt, it would say, you know, spoke to such-and-such, a representative of the property man, you know, from the property manager, or received a text message, or an email, or something to that effect. The receipt would make clear how that consent was given and by whom.
Thank you. And how'd you arrive at the hours of 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m.?
2:00 to 7:00 a.m. Yeah, so these hours, in Montgomery County, those hours are 2:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. And just in working with the mayor's office in, on this bill, because we had had a similar provision in the bill that we passed and that was vetoed at the end of last term, we had some back and forth about what those hours were, and these were the hours that the mayor's office felt good about.
So what happens if you need the lot outside of 6:00, 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m.? And you're looking to find a space in that lot? Or you're the owner of that lot, and your lot is filled up, and you're not aware of it? You, you have to somehow confirm that the, the signs that you've already posted is what you want to have happen? Yes, I'm asking the logic behind the, the time, right? Like, what's the difference between 1:00 a.m. and 3:00 a.m.? Like, we should either allow it any time of day, or we should not allow it, or we should have some type of permission granted? I guess I'm struggling to understand the logic of the hours.
Well, for me, I think of daytime hours as ones where people who are kind of on the move, people who are running errands, maybe in and out of one place or another, and may carelessly park their car here and there for a few minutes. We don't want those people to be pounced upon, you know, in a couple of minutes necessarily, where it's not such a, an egregious issue that like somebody wouldn't notice it, or that by the time somebody noticed it, it couldn't be taken care of, or it would be alleviated already. But we also don't want to make too great a difficulty for folks in the middle of the night. I think of folks who are like working the graveyard shift. I don't really want them coming back to their apartment complex at 8:00 in the morning and finding that somebody is in their parking space. So we're allowing for the, the towers to just go ahead and take care of those kind of things overnight.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. I had a question also. So as far as, like, emergency, like, emergency toes, like if something's blocking a fire hydrant on a property or blocking a handicap ramp, or the car is in a damaged or unsafe, in unsafe condition, are those also not allowed to be towed without authorization during those hours?
I'm sorry. Can you help, can you clarify that for me once?
Yeah, so like if there's an emergency, I mean, if there is a car that's unsafe or, or one that's in, you know, blocking a handicap ramp and a handicap person's trying to get onto it, or, I don't know, there's an active fire on a property and there's a car parking block in the fire hydrant, are those toes allowed to happen without, without prior approval?
So I'd say there's a couple of things. There are a variety of different circumstances. It seems There are a variety of different circumstances, it seems that, you know, within that scope. Um, for example, if a car is blocking a fire hydrant, or is creating an immediate emergency impediment, um, you know, I'm just gonna assume that the, that the emergency response is already underway. And, and that's kind of what, when, when we're learning that there's a, an issue there. Um, the city of Baltimore always reserves the right to relocate a vehicle. Uh, they don't even necessarily need to impound that vehicle, but the city always reserves the right to relocate a vehicle, uh, to, to alleviate some emergency circumstance, uh, like that.
But this, does this bill allow for, um, for trespass towing to do those same things on private property that they're authorized to be on during those hours without abiding by this, um, by this proposal?
To be clear, I guess during the late night hours, it doesn't require authorization directly individually for the tow.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about the other hours of the day, the times when you need authorization.
Yeah, you would always need authorization, directly, direct authorization.
Right, so, um, if I can also ask, um, the representative from Montgomery County, because you said that that's, that's kind of the gold standard, I think you mentioned. What, what is, uh, Montgomery County's rules regarding, uh, whether a car is unsafe or abandoned? Are they allowed to be towed right away?
So if the, the property owners set the circumstances and the rules of parking and towing, and so if an abandoned vehicle is identified as a reason for a tow on demand, then in the non-p patrol hours, yes, they could just be towed. Otherwise, it's a, it's a tag situation. Our law is a little different. We have to tag the car and, um, allow there to be notice of 48 hours before the tow can happen if it's just an abandoned vehicle. But if it's blocking handicap, fire lane, fire hydrants, things of that emergent nature, um, I think that is a completely different, um, beast. It's not really trespass towing, because at that point, it's, it's really an emergency response. And so the police would then, uh, address those issues.
So thank you. So would you recommend that that's something that we amend in this bill to allow, uh, for those emergency toes to occur right away?
I am not completely aware of how the police consumer requested and trespass tow operations and the laws in Baltimore City work together. But to the extent that the council feels that there isn't sufficient, um, language to make it clear that the police can clear out an emergency situation, then that is something you can consider.
Yeah, well, we're not, you know, we're not necessarily referring to like the police in this situation. I mean, this is, you know, if my understanding is correct, um, in Montgomery County in an unsafe condition, a car can be towed right away, immediately. And so if we're looking to, to you guys in Montgomery County as the experts in this, I guess that's, that's where my question is, can the, or should the tower be able to make, um, should we define in the bill that a tower can automatically tow a car 24/7, 365? If it's in certain criteria that's in an unsafe, um, environment? We're not talking about a car that's necessarily, you know, doesn't have a sticker for the property that they're parked at. We're talking about an unsafe, uh, condition. Should the tower be able to go ahead and alleviate that, um, that safe, that potential safety hazard? Whether it be parked in front of a fire hydrant, whether we parked in front of a handicap ramp, um, whether it be blocking the entrance, uh, you know, to, to a complex, for instance. I know that, that actually has come up in my district where there was a car blocking and, um, and an ambulance needed to get through. I think they literally just physically pushed the car off to the side, but, um, so from your, uh, expertise, is that something that you think we should include in this bill?
We actually have language that if the council is interested, they can lift, because in addition to the, um, two to, the not two to, from the two to seven, nine o'clock, where they can tow without authorization, the other exception for authorization being needed is if it is blocking a fire lane, blocking access to, uh, property. So if, if the council's interested, we do have that language in our statute.
Okay, that'd be great. If you don't mind, if you can just send that over to, uh, to the, to the committee or maybe to the bill sponsor, have them forward it, that would be appreciated.
Sure.
Did you have your hand up?
I did, I, I bet, I didn't know if the sponsor was attempting to respond to your question or not.
I didn't hear him.
No, I was just saying, I, I'm glad to forward that.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so the, the question I have, well, one, I'll just, I'll just thank the sponsor for bringing this forward. I, I recently had a situation with a, uh, disabled senior, uh, whose vehicle was towed, uh, for literally being parked on the white stripe of the park that delineated the parking spots in her apartment complex. Wasn't anything that was reported. It was just a tower driving through the lot, saw that she was technically violating this very minor rule, uh, and impacted her ability to get to work, um, for over a week, impacted her ability to pay rent. Um, it was, you know, a, a, a really serious situation that we had to help her navigate. Um, and so I, I, I'm thankful that we're revisiting this, uh, because a lot of people are victimized by, um, situations that aren't particularly serious or emergencies that, uh, can have real financial impacts. The question I had was more, I know we haven't gone to all the agency reports, but in the finance report, it made a recommendation to actually raise the fees from where we are and, um, noted that, you know, it was trying to bring them into alignment with other jurisdictions. Uh, I was just curious as to why that would be the recommendation, uh, or what, a recommendation, um, from an assessment done by the finance department, uh, considering, uh, as the sponsors noted in materials provided, that, uh, we already have some of the highest rates, um, in, in, in the area. Uh, so I don't know if it's.
We're gonna, we're gonna get to the agencies after, if we can just, um, and I don't mind starting off with you as the first question when we get to the agencies, but if we could just stick to, um, asking questions of, of our, of the bill sponsor's guests in the meantime, so that we can move on to the next part, uh, with.
Hold on, then, it sounds like, uh, it looks like Councilmember Ron Ramos has a question for the guest. I'll hold off for agents, too.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, any other questions? Councilman Ramos, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues, and thank you to the bill sponsor, um, for bringing this. I had a specific question. I see that in the original bill, it had talked about one of the exemptions from, from not, uh, trespass towing was not just the hours, but also that the, um, there was a reasonable attempt to actually have, uh, someone, uh, either the owner of the property or the manager of the property or the company at least try to notify the person that they're parked in the wrong place. And then your amendments have it, that you had stated, um, where there would be authorization from the property manager, that yes, that doesn't, that doesn't belong here. So it sounds like what we tried to do initially was to actually put the onus on the property manager and the towing company to at least find the person. You know, yell into a restaurant and say, hey, anybody here, you know, got towed over, you know, parked over here or something? So is that something you worked out with the towing companies that you thought that that was not gonna be reasonable?
Thank you for the question, uh, Councilmember. Um, the multi, the Maryland Multi-Housing Association raised questions, uh, as well as the towers raised questions over how one would interpret the language you're referring to, um, exhaust all reasonable and diligent efforts. And, uh, there was a, I think it was a reasonable question that they raised as to what that actually means. Um, Councilmember Torrance and I, uh, also had this same conversation with, uh, the law department about what that would mean. And there were, um, it, it, it just, it wasn't clear exactly what that might mean. Um, in fact, one of the suggestions from the law department was basically, um, what we just heard is the case in Montgomery County that, uh, related to having to tag and give notice to the vehicle for, for 48 hours. Um, maybe we would, uh, do that. And I just thought that that would place too great a burden on the property owners and the property managers to effectively control their private property. Um, but one of the other suggestions was this one that I think, you know, is reasonable and that is the standard in, um, Howard County, that, um, that there be, uh, consent for the individual tow.
Okay, thank you very much for that explanation. I, I appreciate it. I had been interested in that particular line and then saw it out, um, removed. But I appreciate the, um, the discussion. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair. That's it for now.
Yeah, it sounds like an interesting conversation to have moving forward. Like, I'd love, once, once that's worked out, to also get, you know, DOT ticketing agents to, you know, walk into the restaurant first and say, hey, heads up, I'm gonna ticket people if you don't pay your parking meter or something like that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I could just add, uh, I, you, you raise a great point there. Um, that is also kind of part of my sense about what happens in these circumstances, like, um, I, I had somebody bring a complaint to me a few years ago about actually a, a, a location in Councilmember Ramos's district, uh, about three years ago, four years ago, where they were towed from a lot where they claimed that they had, um, been wrongfully towed. And when we looked into it, what we actually found is that at that particular site, the tower, um, was required to go into the property to get consent before they towed the vehicle. And it was the property manager's practice to say that before I give you consent, I'm gonna ask around and see if I can figure out who's this is. And, um, I think that that is a really good example of how by just adding this little step of requiring property managers to have a slightly more active role in consenting to, to, to how their property is managed on a case-by-case basis, um, that we promote and encourage, um, you know, thoughtful, uh, compassionate behavior from property managers that will often result in saving people a lot of money.
Yeah, so look, you know, I've mentioned this to you before. We, you know, we should certainly start by, you know, practicing what we preach. And so it'd probably be a good idea for like DOT, uh, to do the same thing. Um, they can even start now, that before DOT tows anybody off city streets for whatever reason, that they, they too, um, you know, follow these things that we're looking to ask private companies on private property to do. Um, is there any other questions for, uh, for this panel before we move on to the agencies? Uh, seeing none, uh, thank you very much, um, Councilman Dorsey and, uh, and your panel for introducing, uh, this bill and explaining it to us. Uh, we'll now move on to the next portion of, uh, the hearing, uh, with the agencies. So if I can just, uh, we'll go one by one on the agencies. If agency folks can, uh, turn on your cameras, uh, and we will start, uh, with the law department.
Hello, Mr. Chair. This is Hillary Ruley on behalf of the law department. I apologize, my camera is not working. But, uh, we just wanted to say that we approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency as well as the amendments proposed by the councilman. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Um, uh, next up, we will have, uh, the best dressed man on this call, uh, Justin Lane on behalf of BDC.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, BDC stands by its report and has no objection to this bill.
Okay, thank you. Um, next up is, uh, Parking Authority.
Thank you very much. This is Fran Brunzinski with the Baltimore City Parking Authority. We reviewed the legislation and do not believe it affects any of our operations, and we do not object to the regu, uh, legislation.
Okay. Does, doesn't the, does the Parking Authority, um, don't you guys have some, some lots that, that have private tow con, uh, contracts?
We do, but we don't approach our towing like that with a trolling. It's complaint-driven.
Gotcha, okay. I thank you, uh, DOT.
Mr. Chair, Liam Davis, Baltimore City DOT. Um, we stand by our bill report, uh, which is no objection. Um, that, you know, understanding that report was submitted prior to this, these latest rounds, this latest round of amendments, um, which we would really like to take a deeper, uh, look at. Um, so we appreciate that this is a work session today and that we're talking all of these through. So thank you so much, and if you have any questions, let us know.
Uh, we will. Next up is, um, BPD.
Mr. Chair, I'm Shannon Conway, Legislative Coordinator for BPD, and we stand by our bill report, and we have no objection, but ultimately we defer to DOT.
Okay, thank you. Um, and last up here, um, finance. Uh, we did not get the bill report up until when the hearing was starting. So if you can, uh, just tell us what's in your bill report, I would appreciate that.
Certainly. Mara James for the Department of Finance, Legislative Engagement Lead. Um, our bill report defers to DOT. We do provide some information, which Councilmember Burnett referred to about a recent fee study that we, we done, we did about DOT's current towing fee compared to other jurisdictions nearby, um, which from that analysis, we, uh, had recommendations to increase certain fees based on what the towing fee was, the tow dispatch fee, the admin fee and storage fee, um, comparing our rates to those of Baltimore County, Anarundel County, PG and Montgomery County. Um, and those recommendations would put it at above this 250, but from our understanding, that might be different depending on whether or not trespass towing, what's in this bill would apply to DOT. We wanted to make that known.
I'm sorry, can you clarify that? Did you say with your fees, um, that the city would be above the 250 that we're asking the private companies to go by?
So the recommendations that we had, the current fees as we saw them, and I'm just looking off the side to look at the notes that we have, was that towing, we charge 140 for, if we're talking about towing from, and storing for four days. The average would be a tow charge of $140, admin fee of 40, and storage fee of 80, for a total around $260. Um, compared to Baltimore County, Anarundel County, PG and Montgomery County, that was much less than theirs. And the fees that we recommend, that our fee study said to put us more in line, would get us to around 315 for a four-day storage in that way. So that's just how.
Okay, four days, but not for, I think the pricing that we're going off of is, is for the, is for the tow. It's sort of like if your car gets towed and you go to pick it up same day, what it would be.
And so in that way, we would, we're at 140, which is in, while Baltimore County is at 180.
I think the admin would be 180, you're saying, right?
With that, yeah, correct.
Okay, um, you know, and it, and it's interesting, you mentioned about, um, you know, on a four-day basis, because I think one of the, one of the issues that I hear the most about, the most complaints I get regarding towing is about the city towing in the city yard and primarily focused around the hours, uh, that they operate. And so if, um, i- if you're towed and it's before a holiday or something else, I mean, your car could be, uh, could be sitting in the city's lot with no way to access it, preventing you from going to the doctor, going to the hospital, going to work, doing whatever it is that you need to do. Um, is there somebody here that can, that can tell us what the hours of operation are for the, uh, for the city yards?
That information for you, uh, shortly. Um, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm on a thread with our towing division chief, so I'll have that momentarily.
Okay, um, also, um, in this, in this, uh, bill, it also talks about drop fees. And so, uh, Liam, if, um, who are you, ha- has your team spoken at DOT internally on if DOT is willing to abide by the same rules that we're asking these towers to do? So, uh, one of the things regarding drop fees, the city doesn't have a mechanism, um, to do that. Is that something that you guys would be willing to do also? And allow that if you're about to tow somebody and it's before a certain period of that tow, uh, that they can get their car released for the same 25% rate we're asking the private companies to do?
So I think we're totally willing to have the conversation. Um, it is a, is a, you know, this is a bigger conversation to be had. Um, you know, I understand where you're, where you're coming from, Councilman, Councilman. Um, so this is something that we will likely have to follow up with you on after having that conversation. So this is something that we will likely have to follow up with you on after having that conversation.
Okay. I mean, in the meantime, if, if, as soon as you get the answer about the, the city yard hours, if you can just speak up and let us know.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Councilman Torrance, did you have your hand up? You're, you're muted.
Mr. Chair?
His mic is not working. If he wants, he can, he can send a chat message and I can relay it.
Okay, that'd be good. Councilman Dorsey, did you have a question?
Yeah, I thought I'd just try to add some clarification. I think that the Finance Department's report is a little bit confusing as some of the conversations happened. I also think that the information in the Finance Department's report is inaccurate. I've done, I've had like tons and tons of conversations about this. My understanding, and I believe this is on the Department of Transportation's website, is that when you get towed, say, for being parked in a no stop, like in a bus stop, you are charged $120 if you're on the east side of the city, $130 or I guess, $130 if you're on the east side, $140 if you're on the west side. And that's just the towing rate. And then once you get to the yard, there's a, there's an administrative fee of $35 and a daily storage fee of $50 that commences immediately. Whereas, a- and, and, and so that's how the, the city rate gets up closer to the 250 if you add all those things together. But keep in mind, the 250 we're setting in this bill is just for that towing. It doesn't include any storage or administrative fee. So the city is already charging significantly less than the, than, than the tow, than trespass towing allows.
Finance was pretty clear. I mean, they were talking, they were just giving us a four day average as to, you know, just to give that. I don't, I don't think that they were indicating that, that if you, if your car gets towed, you're immediately gonna be spending over, over that 250. But I just, I just noted the irony that, and I appreciated that Finance did that to give us like the, really the full scope of, of what we should be considering, but I, you know, I can't help but notice the irony of when they mentioned about a four day average, because that's something that I, I hear of quite often, is that if your car gets towed by the city, depending on the day and time that the car gets towed, yeah, you're likely gonna be waiting four days to get your car back, so.
If I may, Councilman, because I have the hours for you. So at Pulaski, Monday through Saturday, open 8:30 AM to 3:15 PM. Sundays and holidays, it's closed.
Tell, tell me that again? Eight to when?
8:30 AM to 3:15 PM.
To 3:15?
Yes.
Wow.
And then at.
Close on Sunday?
Close on Sunday. Fallsway is open Monday through Friday and those hours are 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Okay, and it's closed Saturday and Sunday?
Yes, and holidays.
Okay, and so, what, how do you determine which yard you tow to?
I believe it's geographic, and that's kind of what the Councilman was just alluding to. East side is likely gonna be Pulaski. West side is more Fallsway. But it's also, you have to keep into account availability of space. So sometimes that comes into account. And we ran into challenges during the height of the, excuse me, height of the pandemic.
Yeah, I mean, you know, Liam, I'm sure you can appreciate this, that it makes no sense that you guys could tow somebody's car at 3:16 PM because they're parked in a no parking from, you know, they don't get back to their car in time for one of the spots you have to move by three to five, right? And then they can't get their car back until 8:30 the next morning, making them late to work the next day and possibly can lead to them getting fired. So people basically can lose their job so that we can, we can tow cars. We said, we don't have to have a shop open until after 3:15 PM. I mean, I don't, I don't think that that's acceptable at all. I think these hours are, are very problematic. I, I do appreciate the people who work at the yard, they, you know, the person who runs the yard, they're, they are very responsive when we reach out to them, but unfortunately, you know, the average constituent doesn't have the ability to, to get somebody from the tow yard on the phone after hours and 3:15 is not considered after hours. And so at the very least, there needs to be the ability for people to claim their car right after it's being towed. And so at the very least, and I'm not saying this is a standard we should go by, I'm sure there's best practices out there, but off, off my personal top of my head, I would say that when you tow somebody's car, they should have at least four hours to be able to recover that car. So whatever the latest time you're willing to tow somebody off the streets of Baltimore is to one of these yards, you should be able to get your car back when you notice that it was towed, and which typically, in my opinion, would be within four hours. So these hours don't work.
We will, we will certainly take your feedback into account. And I actually did get some additional clarification. So Fallsway is limited to peak hour towing. So they receive peak hour towing and then everything else goes to Pulaski, which is a larger facility.
Mr. Chairman, Councilman Torrance had a question for Mr. Davis, specifically why the, wide gap in hours between the two lots?
That's something that we can, we can follow up on, Councilman. I think that's a great question. So we can follow, follow up with you. I will say this, the agency has taken some steps to really improve our public facing information, especially on our website. So if you go to transportation.baltimorecity.gov backslash towing, there's a ton of great information that has been updated on our website. So I really, I can drop that in the chat just for informational purposes. But I will write that question down and add it to the list, Councilman Torrance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions for any of the agencies? Go ahead, Councilman Burnett.
Just bouncing it back to Finance on the recommendation. I mean, I do understand a, a need to assess fees, but I, I, I don't really, I guess what's the logic for trying to align with other jurisdictions for the sake of it? Is there like a larger plan to use this money to expand hours at the tow lot? Or, or any other purpose beyond alignment that would justify that recommendation?
So there was, in terms of alignment with jurisdictions, certainly we like to do that analysis for our fees. But then also looking at our needs for maintenance and improvement for these facilities. And if revenue was able to be increased by increasing fees, could that go towards supporting capital needs for that? So that was another consideration as we were looking at this as well.
Got it. And, and just a quick follow up, Mr. Chair, on that. Are the, I guess, are the fees collected just beyond this recommendation? Are they only used for towing related infrastructure, capital operations? Are there restrictions on how those dollars are used already? I guess with the status quo?
I would have to look into the details of that to see if there are specifics about requirements for it. Generally, the way that the city's fee structure works, I believe there have been other hearings out there, so we discussed that the fees need to go to the direct costs for that and cannot be, we can't generate extra revenue to go to other things outside of that direct service. But I would need to look into the details to make sure that this, that applies to this as well, and I can get back to you on that.
Mr. Chair, this is a question from Councilman Torrance to Finance. Is there a hardship waiver possibility?
Just one thing before we move on. Could you supply the response to the committee? So everybody has it. Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
In terms of the question about a hardship waiver, that is not something that we have. As I said, this was a recommendation. It's not a, it's not a structure that's going in currently. From what I know, there is not a hardship waiver. But.
Okay, thank you. And so in, in, in keeping in line with that, is one of the, I assume this, this report was done when? I see when it was completed, but when did it start, this analysis?
I would have to go back and ask, it was a, we had, in our, in the Budget Office, we have a, a business analyst position. This was one of the first processes that they were looking into. So I believe.
A six month thing? Is this a year thing?
It was not a year thing. It was maybe three to six months.
Okay. I mean, because, because clearly what we've seen, what we've seen even every single day, but certainly since last year, costs have risen. So the fact that you guys are proposing to raise, to raise the fee, I assume if you were to do the same analysis today, you'd probably be asking to raise the fee even more to co- cover other factors and other, you know, other increases that that go into towing, whether it be equipment, whether it be tires on the trucks, whether it be other supplies, or just labor costs going up as well. And so if you can just get us that when it was started, so we have an idea of when, of what this is talking about. But, you know, I can't help but point to the, really to, to this like sort of double standard that, you know, that the city here is proposing to increase these fees, but at the same time telling others to decrease their fees. And I'm just saying that we have to, we have to start as a city to lead by example. And, and there shouldn't, you know, we, we should not be asking people to do things we're not, that we're not willing to do ourselves.
Mr. Chair, if I can just add for the context. I believe Councilmember Dorsey was referring to this, and this may be, this is likely an error on our part. In terms of the fees we were increasing, the towing fee itself, we recommended increasing from $140 to $150. And then administrative fees were gonna be the biggest jump. And so if this bill is not addressing administrative fees in that way, then I would say that getting to that 250 in, well, we talked about that in our bill report, getting close to that 250, this, our recommendation only increases the fee by $10 for the city in terms of just towing, just to clarify.
Okay. Liam, I'm asking you another question about these hours. What, what are these, if, if these employees are working a full day, people who work at this yard that's open from 8:30 to 3:15, how are they putting in a, a full day's work or are we paying them part time?
I mean, I can, I can definitely follow up with you on specifics, but I will say those are public hours. And, you know, I can speak pretty confidently that there's work that happens at the yards beyond public access hours. We can follow up with more specifics, Councilman.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that. Okay, any other questions before we get to public testimony? Seeing none, we will move on to public testimony. Richard, do you want to get started on that? Or do you want to make me the host and I can go through it? Richard, you there?
I'm here, Mr. Chair. First up is Aaron Greenfield.
Okay, he's still muted. Can you unmute him?
Now, let me, let me try and make him a panelist. I'm not. There you go. Aaron Greenfield, unmute. Okay. Uh, computer's not responding.
All right. Richard, can you just make me the host and I'll, I'll handle it?
I'm close. Okay. Okay, good house.
All right, thank you. I see, I see the order a little differently than you did, but I will start with Aaron Greenfield.
Mr. Chair, if I may, real quick, I just, I just wanted to say that towing division chief confirmed the hours at Pulaski are eight to four.
Eight to four, okay.
Public pickup is 8:30 to 3:15.
Gotcha. All right, thank you so much for that. Okay, we will start with Aaron Greenfield. Give me one second. I just lost him on, it looks like he fell off. When he comes back, we will get started with him.
It looks like he left, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. Give me, give me one second. All right, I could not reach him. I'll just keep going. First one up is Xenia Igorova. Do you have any testimony?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you. Scott Wright. Scott Wright, do you have any testimony?
I signed in for Buzz Greenwood. He'd like to read a prepared statement if he could, please.
Hi, this is Burke Greenwood. And, or Buzz Greenwood, as many of you may have known me by that. My father was Burke Greenwood when we started probably one of the largest or long continually run city towing company. And that's, we started in 1925 and we've been on the board several times. The Tow Board has been self sufficient for decades in handling complaints, licensing and other issues. I respectfully request to table the bill and discuss any further issues with the two, two Tow Board. With time comes change and collectively as an industry, we can adapt to keep the lots of Baltimore City in order to benefit small business and public safety. So I thank you very much. I know a lot of my, you know, the, the other comp, towing companies are on board with this as well. So that's it. And I know Ryan Dorsey, he knows me personally, so we appreciate all that you do, Ryan.
Okay, thank you. Next up is going to be Harry Mayo. Hold on. Harry, do you have any testimony?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. Couple items. One is, the yard isn't required to be 24 hours. We are required to release cars 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I do agree with the transparency by adding additional information to the tickets and record availability. And as far as what the representative from Montgomery County was saying, as far as the small guys versus the big guys, it's tougher for smaller companies to amass the infrastructure that it takes to run a business 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I, I recently bought a house in Baltimore City. I just moved from Charles County, I just went to settlement last week. I just moved from Charles County to Baltimore City. I love Baltimore City and has a ton of potential. I love Baltimore City. Um, and it has a ton of potential. Um, but right now, today, Baltimore City is not Montgomery County. And we have a ways to go before we get there. Um, I see, I see the progress. I've, I've, I've been working in Baltimore City, uh, since two thousand and three, and I see the progress and, um, but we still got a ways to go. And um, it's, it's, I understand Montgomery County standard, um, with towing, um, but it's, it's like different municipalities have different idiosyncrasies, and, um, this Baltimore City is, is not Montgomery County. And that's it.
You muted, Mr. Chair.
All right, I'm sorry. Um, yeah, the next up is, uh, Tom Showalter. Tom, do you have any testimony?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
First of all, I want to say thank you all very much for taking the time out and letting us, uh, testify. Um, I am the board representative for the towing industry. I sit on the towing board for Baltimore City. Uh, what I'd like to start with saying is, one is that the Tow Board has been existence for over three decades. It has its rules and regulations that was put together for reasons of these concerns. Every year, pricing is discussed. Every year, rules and regulations, which do need to be updated. I fully, fully agree with that part. But to automatically put a cap on a tow with the way the world is today, prices going up, fuel just went up seventy-five cents, the cities on TV saying we need to be above minimum wage, we need to be paying more. I agree with all of that. So with that being said, how is it possible that you are going to tie our hands with price capping? I just purchased a new tow truck yesterday. The tow truck increase from over last year's figures is thirty percent more. I have asked numerous for us to sit together at the Tow Board, let us produce what it costs for us to do business. Healthcare insurance for my people, I've just signed that check yesterday, is up twenty percent. What we're paying people is up thirty percent. Um, and we want to move forward. We're not victimizing anybody. These are violation, tow violations. Um, again, we're not Montgomery County. Our taxes are twice as much as Montgomery County. What it costs to do business here is more than, than Montgomery County. We are required by our own rules and regulations, which I agree with, to be open twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, including the holidays. We are open to re- to release cars. Mr. Greenwood years ago made, helped produce this Tow Board and wanted us to be open, so we're here for the consumer to pick up their cars. The city don't do that. We do. That costs money. Heat, light, power, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. What we pay our employees to be open. We are here for the property owners. Don't want them vehicles on their property. Mrs. Jones comes home, she pays to, to be in a certain spot. Somebody else is sitting in her spot, she can't get there. Maybe she has grocery bags. Let's think about her. We're trying to regulate certain hours to be towed. Um, why is that? Violations happen twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So, again, I'm looking at it two ways. I have a piece of property, I have a store, I'm out front. Somebody pulls up to run, go do, go does a drug deal, or whatever, um, they can't, they can't come in and spend money at my facility because somebody's out here parked illegally. You want me to stop, call the police, try to get them to come on a personal property? That's a problem. They don't wanna tow that. All stopping people from coming into my business. Again, Baltimore City tows them off the public streets for doing that every day. And we're not asking them to do all of that to knock on the door. Hey, are you in here? Are you not in here? No, they write a ticket, it gets towed. I don't understand why we're picking on private industry. We do it for the private property owners. We are private industry. The city does it for the city of Baltimore, off the city streets. Again, we have a Tow Board that has rules and regulations that sit down and discuss this. It has been said numerous times, the state law allows us to charge two times what the local municipality does. I have asked that it be looked at. Let's get the, let's get the ruling of the Attorney General. How do they perceive how that law is written and what it means? We have asked that numerously. Before we make any rules today, or this bill goes through, let's get that ruling. How do they feel what the two times the municipality is? I think that should be a big part of this today. We keep going with Montgomery County. Montgomery, we ain't Montgomery County. We're a far cry from Montgomery County. They're so far away, it ain't funny. I just checked while we were here. Prince George's County, which I own a towing company there, they get fifty dollars a day for storage. We only get fifteen. Let's talk about being behind the times. I kept hearing that we're higher than everybody else. Nope, I think we should check on that before we make that, uh, uh, that, that presumption. I just checked real fast. But these are things, last year when this was tabled, I offered to bring that information up. Let's see what a tow truck cost two years ago, what it costs today, what an employee cost, what heat, light, and power cost, water cost, sewage in the city. What are we paying? We are way more than what, what any jurisdictions are. That has never been allowed to bring to the table. I, I asked the board to please, before we do any of this, let's have an open, global discussions. Let's bring this information out. Let's not just put forth this bill because, because somebody is assuming we're predatory people. We actually do a job. I think it would be wrong for me to walk into the city of Baltimore and, and tell the, the council people, yeah, I think we should cap your pay. I think that's what we should do. Because maybe, maybe, because nobody really knows. I, I encourage any councilman, ride with me in a tow truck. Get one of my guys, see what the job we do. I don't think I could do the council people's job. Don't. But it's wrong for me to say I think we should cap you. I think it's wrong for anybody to, in, in an office to say, yep, that's why I think you're predatory. I think, uh, we should cap your fees. Yep, I think we should do this. I think that's wrong. Let us prove what we do. Don't think down on us. Let's bring us up for a change. Let's bring the towing industry up. We do a job. We keep private property, in, private property people happy. We tow vehicles that are unauthorized. I don't, I don't think we're predatory by no means. Uh, somebody said earlier, we should relocate. Who's paying that? The city? I would love to see the city pay us to relocate when we go on a private property, because you brought a break, a great comment, an emergency tow, um, we're gonna call, so while a house is burning down, they can't get to the fire hydrant, we're gonna pick up the phone, call the police department to ask them to come out and tag it, to relocate it? Or we're gonna ask the private property to relocate it? No. We should be able to be patrolling for blocking dumpsters, blocking hydrants, yellow curved area, fire, all of that. That should be just towed away. That is safety issues. Mrs. Jones can't get to her spot because she paid to be able to park there. Somebody else parked there. No, they shouldn't be allowed to park there. That should be removed. You know, again, we're not, this is crazy. Somebody really needs to sit at a table and let's talk about this. Um, uh, uh, again, I'm, I'm, I'm jumping around, I had so much to speak about. We have rules and regulations. Let the Tow Board do what it has been doing for three decades, which is controlling pricing. It's always been controlled. The board votes, there's a board now, it was put into play over three decades ago. Allow us to do what we've been doing. There's been no real issues. Ask the question, Mr. Itzy, how many complaints have come across the Tow Board? We already have the information at the bottom of all our tow tickets. It says, if you have a complaint, call this, which is the Tow Board, which is Mike Brady. It's already here. Why are we trying to reinvent this wheel? I don't understand this. And, and, and it's always just pickling us because somebody thinks we're making millions. Well, I could tell you what I have invested in signs to put on people's property. It's in, it's in the, it's in the fifty thousand dollar range, just the signs invested, not accounting equipment. Let the Tow Board regulate that. They've regulated for what, how many signs per property. They've regulated how much, how much, how the sign has to sit. Bobby Kearns was very instrumental in, in doing this, along with Mr. Greenwood. There's rules. They just need to be updated, that's all. Let the Tow Board do what it does, which is keep us regulated. We've gotten towers off the board because they didn't wanna be rules and regulations. We monitor them. Ask the question, how many rules, how many, uh, how many complaints come across our board each week? We already give you the ability to come and look at any of our, uh, um, facilities. We can tell you how many we tow. We can tell you how many complaints we have. I bet you there ain't been a complaint come across the Tow Board. Maybe once a month, maybe. Maybe it is. Pull them records, ask Mike Brady for once to pull them out, how many we've had over the last year. There hasn't been a lot. It isn't. And any of the ones that's came across, the Tow Board votes, we either give them their money back, we, we go against the tower, half back, make, give them a drop fee. These already have been decided. This has been fixed. Why are we automatically trying to reinvent this wheel? I am sorry. I, I, I just, I'm asking you all to please table this for further conversation. I think there should be a task force put together, a tower being on it. Mr. Itzy, any of the council people get on it, and let's look into the real issues of towing. I don't believe it's nearly what anybody's projecting it to be. But please, let's not go off of Montgomery County, because I'm sorry, that's a far cry from Baltimore City. Uh, again, I think that's all I have to say. Thank you, but keep in mind of what equipment costs today and what everything else costs.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Um, you brought up a lot of points. Uh, I see Councilman Costello, do you have a question for?
Yes, I, I, I do, Mr. Chairman. Um, and I actually had a request to the committee, but if we could ask the previous witness, um, I think, uh, Mr. Tom, can you just clarify what you said on, um, there was a Maryland state law that regulates, uh, the amount that can be charged as double the amount of the jurisdiction charges? Can you clarify that?
Yes, there's state, the state, that's how the prices have always been regulated. It says, and again, Mr. Parrish is on here, Mr. Parrish knows the actual law number. I do not know that off the top of my head, but it says we are allowed, the city jurisdiction is allowed to charge two times-
I unmuted Mr. Parrish if he wants to weigh in also.
All right, yeah, miss-
But the, the law states we are allowed to charge two times what the local municipality towing fees are.
That's not exactly correct, huh? Uh, the Maryland state law allows any jur- municipality in the state, which this started in twenty twelve statewide. Prior to that, it only affected Baltimore City, Charles County, and Baltimore County. After twenty twelve, any municipality that already has a fee for an impounded vehicle, the total fee could be up to maximum of two times.
Okay, got it. And it, so, um, Mr. Parrish, is there, s- so do you have the same request as Tom about the Attorney General's opinion on that?
Well, actually, the federal law and Attorney General's pin- opinion, to which I sent, uh, to some members, um, from the Office of the Attorney General, State of Maryland, Opinion Number eighty-eight dash zero five five in December tenth, nineteen eighty-eight, by Attorney General at the time, J. Joseph Curran Jr., stated the same as the federal government, that it must be fair and reasonable in comparison to the municipality. And then when you're basing on the question, it's that you have been very well in answering, uh, asking, um, the hours of operation, and if I can make one correction, the minimum it would cost someone to get a car, and it was towed at four o'clock, and they went to Fallsway, not including any other labor, any ticket, or anything else, would be a minimum of two hundred and thirty dollars. Yet they're only required a maximum of sixty-five hours. Based on us, we have to be open a hundred and sixty-eight hours every day of the year. So what is based on that fee, that total fee, in comparison, what would be fair and reasonable? I can add that in twenty thirteen, we did, as a board, the council, Representative Council Curran, and all towers agreed that three hundred and fifty should be the maximum, even though the state would allow four hundred and sixty. And we still to this day have never came off of that, that three hundred and fifty is reasonable. Our disagreement with this bill is putting a fixed number in the legislative, which would take forever to get back out.
No, I, I got that. It sounds like Chairman Schleifer's gonna come to you momentarily. So I, I just wanted to just close out my question. There's not a need, in your estimation, there is not a need for a Maryland Attorney General's, um, opinion on this matter. Is that correct?
That's correct. I believe it's already been said.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for indulging me, Mr. Chairman.
No problem. And Mr. Parrish, we're gonna come back to you, because you're on the list of, uh, people to testify also.
Thank you.
Okay, um, all right, Mr. Showalter, uh, does that conclude your testimony?
I concluded my testimony, a- and again, thank you very much.
All right, no problem. Thank you. The next person up, uh, so I just wanna make it clear, um, Aaron Greenfield is, uh, recused from this bill. Uh, he is not here to test, he was not here to testify. Uh, Grayson Wiggins will be testifying on behalf of MMHA. The next, uh, person up I see is, um, Paula Protani. Um, and for some reason, it's not letting me unmute, unmute her. It's not letting me unmute her. I don't know if she has a microphone. I can make her a panelist and try that.
That's, that's the best option at this, uh, point, Mr. Make of a, uh, make of a, uh, panelist, so he can give me the host key back and I can-
No, I just did. I just added her as a panelist, um, if she'd like to testify.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's not showing that, um, that she has microphone capabilities. Um, okay, we will, uh, we will come back to her, um, if she'd like to, uh, comment in the chat section. Or she gets the capabilities to speak, she can speak up. Uh, the next up I see over here is Norm McCarthy. Uh, Norm, do you have any testimony? Norm, uh, you've been unmuted. Do you have any testimony?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's pretty muffled. Can you speak up? It's very muffled.
This, Mr. Chair, anybody, uh, who can communicate can, uh, chat to me and I can, uh,
Right.
relay the message.
Norm, are you, are you using a headset or something?
No, I'm not.
Okay, all right, why don't, why don't you just speak as loud as you can?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I appreciate your time. I appreciate what, what you're putting out there. Um, it's kinda hard to be in a private industry and, and be the villain all the time. And that's what's happening with, with, uh, Councilman Dorsey. I don't think he understands what we go through and what rights people have with having private property. There's no reason, no, no understanding. I understand safety, I understand the power of the council, they can do what they want. But as far as people's private property, if I have a, a situation and I have a drug dealer putting a vehicle on my property for a stash car, or a gun, stash gun, or whatever, and I'll give him a prime example, you guys just had a raid of forty individuals that had a big, uh, fentanyl thing going on. We took two of their cars. Okay, off a property that we know of. So, the, the issue with private property is people should be able to take that liability away. People should have the, 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 um, a reasonable source of, 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 of peace of mind to come home, whether they live in Barclay, or, you know, uh, or, or Hamilton Springs. Um, when people come home and, and there, there's no parking, and you find out there's a little event across the street, and there's, there's ten or fifteen cars there parked that don't belong, they should have a right to have them removed. And it shouldn't, they shouldn't have to wait until they get home from work, if they're working all day- And it shouldn't, they shouldn't have to wait until they get home from work, if they're working all day, see that the vehicles are there, make the phone call, and then wait twenty minutes, half hour, however long for the for the tow truck to get there. And then have a confrontation meanwhile with the people that are on that property that don't belong. Uh, that's an issue. When you talk about people um and 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 they come across hardship because their car's towed, myself, be responsible. If you're coming up to a property and a property has a sign, and the sign is this big, because this is what you require, it's thirty feet wide, twenty-four inches, I mean thirty inches across, twenty-four inches high, and it expresses what you can park there for. And if you have these throughout the property and it's still parked there, it's common sense. And if you look and 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 you have an issue with where you're parking, don't park there. Because when you do, it's gonna cost you. I mean, I myself, I've lived in Baltimore all my life. I never go anywhere on any property without looking for signs, because that's it's, I don't I don't know where you can go where you don't have private property signs. Another thing is, when you're talking about educating people and the management should go knock on their door and tell them to, you knock on the door, you get you can get your head busted. That's what happens on some of these properties. I'll give you some examples. Maple Crest Apartments, the the maintenance guy there, Maple Crest, knocked on the door, told the guy he's not allowed to park in front of the dumpster, keeps bumping it or parking it there. It busts his head. The man has a family. We have a, we have a form, people fill out as to what they want to tow for, and this is what we tow for. Whether it's night or day, whatever reason, if it's a problem, parked in front of the dumpster, parked in a fire lane, whatever the issue may be. The fire lanes, when you talk about issues and while you get there and 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 there's a fire, what are you gonna do? Uh, you should have a right to tow. This is a vehicle that we tow that on a fire lane, but unfortunately then then we had to tow it. Then they wanted to find us for not being there. So, I mean, private property is is exactly what it is. When you're comparing Baltimore City to Montgomery County, when 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 Tommy was talking about repairs and all the things on trucks, Baltimore City roads are horrendous, they're terrible. He, you go to Montgomery County, it's a different world. I go through different counties for different things. Baltimore City, when we talk about city impound, we're open twenty-four seven. I called Andrew to get cars because we do repossessions as well. I'll call City Yard, you don't get through. Finance companies have been, have had issues where they can't get their their collateral, they've given up on it because they can't get through on the hours. When when you're saying things should be a certain way, and as far as the complaints, I don't know any complaints, because when something comes my way, I'm reasonable with it. I don't know how many complaints they have against me, because I haven't had any that have been brought to my attention. But we try to deal with people respectfully. My counters are open counter. I don't deal through a little window. When somebody comes up here, I treat them with respect because they give me respect. As far as the the signage and properties in general, if you're dealing with apartment complex, you go to visit somebody, they should inform you that you have to have a permit if it's a permit lot. The reason you have permits is because it's limited parking. You gotta remember, these 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 complexes were built back in the sixties, seventies, eighties. People now have three and four vehicles, they have other people staying with them. If I live there and I'm seventy years old, I'm trying to come home and I can't go to my building because all the parking's taken up, I have a right to call. I have a right to 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 not have an issue. I have a right to to my privacy as well. Why would it that I have to come out and and inform whoever that I'm the person that called to tow? I think we're forgetting the issue in Baltimore City on the east side, when that woman was talking about the drug dealing going on in her neighborhood, and they firebombed her house and killed her and all her kids. People don't want to get involved. That's why they hire us. When somebody wants to get get tough and holler at the car getting towed, they tell us. We deal with it. They don't have to go to the the management company and 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 scare the the woman that's working or the gentleman that's working there. They they have enough on their plate to deal with the managing of the whole of the uh the property itself than to worry about the towing. The towing, as anything else, they put it out to other people. You have the towing, the trash, the the plumbing, the car, whatever. There's people that take care of that. We take care of the towing, we take care of liability. And I'm just, when Tommy was talking about a new truck, I just had a water pump put in the truck. Well, actually, I ordered it, it's gonna take five days. It's gonna be eighteen hundred hours to get it fixed. We have expenses as well. And when you're looking at properties and when you you talk about the hours that you're gonna allow to patrol, go down Maryland Avenue, they have a church with with the uh the lots there. They can't have people in Atlanta at certain hours because they have all kinds of activities all through the day. Anything after eleven o'clock needs to be off that lot. If not, when the the people come in the morning for the church, they can't park there. We've had it to where we had twenty cars down there. Because now you have different colleges running a lot of different the uh the residents around there. And what are they doing? They have their friends over, they park on lots. Anyway, I'm just trying to express a few things that I I can't, I mean, I don't understand the bill to where everything is up. And and myself, and I invite Dorsey, uh, Councilman Dorsey to come to me, I got a young lady that's upstairs. Why? She has nowhere to go. I can afford to have her live there. I pay her expenses. I don't even know her. Took her off the street. Ladies, that's something that we do. You're gonna cut my rate? I don't know if I can stay here. And when if you cut my rate, I don't even know if I want to tell on the city. It it can't, you can't, you can't manage. And I I'd like to know, the council member says all these complaints that you have? I'd like to see what you have on my company as well as you, and as far as the 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 person that got towed and there's a hardship, I'll give you myself. Call me. I'll try to help with any situation anybody has, and that's where I try to do my business. And that's what I think a lot of us towers do. And please, I I would really appreciate if you don't keep comparing us to Montgomery County. Drive through Montgomery County, then come drive through Baltimore. That's about it. And and I, and and again, when when I, when I was trying to show you this, this is what we go and we tell people, tell us what you want us to tow for. Give it to us in black. Right, if we have a problem, we can take care of it. When somebody comes and complains, we say, hey, that woman didn't call, I came through. Why? Because you don't belong there, you're not, you shouldn't be doing that. This is what they tow for. It's on your lease. When you sign your lease, they tell you on your lease agreement. Here's our towing policy, sign off on that. So it's it's all about safety, it's all about um, I just a comfort of living, you know what I mean? People should have a right to come home and be able to park close to their property, and and I appreciate your time. And I appreciate what you're saying, because it's it's everybody. Everybody's gotta gotta do it right, you know what I mean? It it's not just this person or that person, this this municipality's taking care of things a certain way. Again, we're not Montgomery County. Montgomery County is nothing near, nothing like Baltimore. In either Howard. So I'm sorry, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next person is Cooper Pollard. Cooper, do you have any testimony?
Uh, yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
Sorry, my uh camera's not working. Um, I think uh Mr. Parrish, Norman, uh, Mr. Showalter kind of uh summed up a lot of what I was gonna say, just economically, um, you you know, we're in a time right now where we're still in pandemic. I'm still, and I'm sure everyone else. Uh, transportation, I think even transportation took a massive hit last year. I'm still trying to recover from last year to make sure I can still stay open for business. Um, and then to be faced with the 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 possibility of, um, you know, our our fees went from three fifty to three hundred, now down to two fifty would be, I I mean, just catastrophic. Um, in in times when the business, the cost of doing business is just constantly going up, as Mr. Showalter said, for trucks, fuel, uh, personnel, the fact that we're open twenty-four seven, um, to lower the cost would just be, uh, again catastrophic. But I do think there um are some very good points in the bill that that merit um us to look at it. Uh, and I think with careful, thoughtful, constructive conversations with people from the industry, uh, with council people, with the general public, with property owners, we can come up with good changes to this bill that would better serve everyone involved from property owner to the vehicle owner to the tower. Um, you know, I just think there's a lot more that needs to be looked uh looked at um in order to make these kinds of changes. So, um, without uh, just going into some of the same things they were gonna say, I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Again, if you don't mind me asking, um, what what do you, what do you tow now, what do you charge now for a a standard tow?
Just We don't do as much in the city. I mean, it it all depends. And like Norman was saying, you know, people with hardship, we all make exceptions for everyone like that when they come to us, but we
I was thinking in general, I mean, what is what does it cost for a regular tow, not including storage fees or any of those other things, just for the actual tow?
For Baltimore City?
Yeah.
Uh, up to the maximum of three hundred.
Three hundred, okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next up is Vince Rogers. Vince, do you have any testimony?
Yeah, thank you, John. Um, just like the rest of the tow. Um, I started towing it out in PG County, so I understand about the price cutting. I'm a homeowner in Baltimore City, and when they did the price cut in PG County, I was in jeopardy of losing my house because of the pricing. Although, now that I'm a business owner, I could be in risk of losing a business, plus my way of living and my house where my family lives, or I might have to go back to working extreme hours, seven days a week, where I don't see my family. And as far as the towing hours, I look at it like this. I have dealt with old elderly people who come in different hours, and they used to ask me, can I make sure I'm in the neighborhood when they are coming home as a security feature? Because then they have a little comfort of walking from there I have to walk to. Plus, there's vehicles that's there because of high impact of the youth who have their friends over, have um it's different scenarios for each problem. So for, it's easy for me to say it's easy for you to do this job, or I'm predatory towing, I'm not predatory towing. If there's a violation over there, it needs to be removed. So those who pay rent there can park freely, not worry about their car being vandalized. Because what happens is, on numerous properties that I've towed out of out of the last seventeen years, guys put their cars on the property, go do crime in another area, come back and get their car, or vandalize someone else's car right there. I've towed numerous cars that had no wheels because they came over there and vandalized. So it's like, I'm a security guard, as well as removing things that don't belong in the property. This, the cap, let's, I filled up my truck tow truck last night, cost me sixty-five dollars. So you figure if I gotta fill it up twice at night, that's a hundred and thirty dollars. Oil changes went up. Everything to maintain my vehicle is cost. The cost to maintain this office. I want to give my staff a raise, but at this rate, I'm scared. So, I would hope we can all just rely on the tow board to deal with all situations, deal with this towing, and to work out a better understanding of what we all go through. So as far as trying to drop this drop fee to sixty-three dollars, so what am I supposed to pay my driver? Ten dollars, fifteen dollars? I still have to pay your bills, tow truck, or it's, I don't think it's cost effective anywhere around the board. I think we need to have a better sit down and bring whatever the true issue is. I don't know, for me, when I tow somebody's vehicle, I look at it as if I was, that somebody was towing my vehicle. Yes, you're gonna be mad because you got towed. But when you look at it and take the responsibility of what you did, of parking in the handicap, fire lane, or parking on a property with no permit, you did, you chose to do those things. If there's no violations, the tow, a tow truck operator has nothing to do. So we have to look at all factors instead of saying there's predatory towing, there's this. Because it's not predatory towing if there's, what do we do? We put police where? Where there's high crime. So property manager now, it's, to me, it's it's um dangerous all the way around the board, which Mr. Dorsey has dressed in up, you know, look for us to be knocking on people's doors, because I understand something. Somebody called me at two o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the morning to remove my vehicle. I'm not gonna knock on people's door at three o'clock in the morning and talk about this is your vehicle. One, they're gonna try to run and know, why am I knocking on their wife's door or their girlfriend's door? They're not gonna think of, oh, he's just trying to find out whose car this car is, so he can move it. They're gonna think the other way. Which can become violent. So I would prefer we could just let the tow board deal with this situation, deal with the pricing. You have people like Charlie Parrish, Tom Schuler, Norm, who's been in the in the towing industry for a long time, who can help us all reach an agreement and become the entity we need to be. That's all I have to say right now.
Okay, and um, uh, what is, what does your company uh charge for standard tow?
For the city?
Yeah, in the city.
Three hundred.
Three hundred, gotcha, okay. Um, if you don't mind me, what's what's the name of, what's the name of your company?
Vision Record Service.
Mr. Chair, I have a question as well.
Um, go ahead, um, Councilman Conway.
Uh, I'm I'm curious, how many toes do you guys get in a in a shift, typically, an eight-hour shift or however long it usually is?
It would depend. Um,
Average, approximate, average or approximate would just be helpful, just to give me a sense.
I can, I personally, anywhere from five to eight cars.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Um, all right, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Rogers, for your testimony. We'll move on to the next uh person. Next up is uh Grayson Wiggins. Grayson, are you testifying on behalf of MMHA?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, go ahead.
Good afternoon to you and members of the committee. I'm Grayson Wiggins on behalf of the Maryland Multi-Housing Association. Uh, our members house approximately a hundred and thirty thousand city residents in two hundred and seventy-nine apartment communities across Baltimore City. Uh, I want to thank Councilman Costello, he's communicated with me specifically about this bill, and and I do appreciate uh the open door policy he's had uh for me in in our ability to discuss the um the issues that we have. MMHA has two primary concerns with the bill. The first is employee safety. You know, on page five, line twenty-seven of the bill, as it currently sits, it requires a name of the person who authorizes the tow to be included in information. Obviously, we have serious concerns about providing the name of our employees uh to the public who who may have authorized a tow because, and I I think Councilman Costello understands this, he mentioned it in his testimony.
Yeah, I think that, I think that item was addressed in the beginning. Um, let me just ask Councilman Dorsey to weigh in on it. Is that one of your amendments, Councilman Dorsey, to remove that and to change how that would be done?
Yes, not only is that one of the amendments, but I clearly communicated that to Mr. Grayson just an hour or so before the committee hearing.
Yes, yeah, and and I appreciate that. Yeah, I I was getting to that. We we have seen the amendment as we provided to us, but we have not had an opportunity to fully go through it yet. Uh, but we do appreciate that that conversation. Uh, the second, the second piece, um, obviously is, it's on page seven, lines one through thirteen. Uh, we think that creates issues, and that's the surveillance towing that you've heard a lot about. We we think it creates issues uh for some of our communities where, as you noted, Mr. Chairman, there may be a a car parked in a handicap spot or a fire lane. Uh, we we're just, we're unsure of where exactly the hours came from. It sounds like Montgomery County has expanded hours. But again, you know, we've had these discussions with Councilman Dorsey, and we're working and to trying to resolve them, and we're open to continued conversations.
Okay, um, thank you very much. Uh, we'll move to the next um person testifying. Um, I don't think he's here to testify, but I'll check. Corey Page.
Not here to testify.
Yeah, okay, I figured. Um, does someone there want to testify?
No, thank you.
Okay. Um, or Sophia? Sophia, would you like to testify?
Thank you.
All right, next up is Robert.
Yep.
Robert, would you like to testify?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, it's Robert Carroll for Quick Response Towing. Um, I'd like to start out, and I'd like to say I agree with pretty much everything that all the other towing companies have said. Um, so I'm not gonna go over all of it again, but there are only approximately eleven towing companies that do what we do every year. And I don't know if you all can understand why there's only eleven companies in any industry. That must tell you that it's how hard it is. Um, when Mr. Ryan Dorsey, Councilman Dorsey, came onto the towing board a few years back, he asked us, can you guys reduce your towing fees by twenty-five percent to help the public? And as an industry, we all sat there at the towing board meeting and said, sure. We reduced our cap twenty-five percent. And that's been, that's back when things were, you know, going a lot better than now, of course, the last couple of years. And we did it, and then instead of being a gentleman and honoring his, his handshake, he's taken the whole time he's been in office and targeted our industry on every possible thing he can. Now, I wanna say that I feel like this is discrimination because this Baltimore City does not offer drop fees at all. They don't offer cash, credit card, um, bitcoin or any other type of payment, period. Your car gets towed to Falls Way or Pulaski if you got a million dollars in your hand standing there. So to reduce us to sixties whatever dollars and to make us offer it is discrimination. Because the city has never offered a drop fee and never, and never uh probably will, because the towers don't collect the money, they get billed. The city gets billed by them, they tow, the city tows all day. Seven to nine, three to six, whatever, towing zone, whatever. You could be in Verizon paying your phone bill at two fifty-nine on Charles Street and something, and all of a sudden there's a computer glitch at three oh one, where you were once parked at, your car will be towed to Falls Way. Which closes at three fifteen or whatever, so now you need to get home, get the kids and everything else in the world. Which, but you wanna talk about helping the public and this and that is, is everybody's um, on everybody's agenda. But obviously, like, thank you Councilman Yitzhak for bringing that up. It hasn't, we've been doing this um around twenty years now, and the whole time we've been doing this, it's always been the city's been, had the same hours. And then, but our light, on our license, we're required to be open a hundred and sixty-eight hours a, a week and pay our help debt. How is that not discrimination? You stay open twenty-four seven, we'll be open seven or eight hours, go home, eat dinner with our kids, turn the phone off. Um, how is it not discrimination? We have to offer a drop fee, not when the car, we have to be attached to the car, picked up, this and that. The city, once it's touching that car, it is, it's on the way to the, to uh Falls Way or Pulaski Highway. It's not, we, we're required to, to redeem cars twenty-four hours a day, our dispatch is sitting here, we have to have twenty-four by thirty inch signs at the entrance, exit, all over the property, every so many feet, depending on where it's at, the city has a little three by three inch sticker on the meter. It says, you'll probably fade it out, that says you'll be towed between seven and nine, seven to nine AM and three to six. Now, we have billboards up all over the property and if one of those signs is laying on the ground or vandalized or spray painted, they call the tow boy and say, there's no sign on it, there's, this sign's missing at the entrance. And they'll say, oh man, your sign's down. Even though the car was parked, you know, wherever, on the grass block in the dumpster. So we end up having to redeem that vehicle. Um, stolen vehicles, we just had a carjacking vehicle and a stolen vehicle taken from us at no charge for free by Baltimore City Rat Squad yesterday. One was involved in a carjacking in Virginia. The other one was stolen from Baltimore City. We don't get paid for those cars that we recover. That's not in anybody's um, in anybody's uh whatever work or work, whatever she did, survey, she never, we never got a copy of anything before this meeting to show all these uh panels or, or things that they've done or, or investigations or statistics. We as the eleven tow companies have nothing. Why can't we get a copy of what she's saying, Montgomery County, Baltimore, whatever? Hartford County is, is three hundred and fifty dollars for a tow, Anne Arundel County's three hundred and fifty. Their, their Baltimore County, their, all their storages are twice of ours, all of them. So, you know, all these, I just don't understand where these numbers, throwing numbers around and you're throwing Montgomery County out. You had to go all the way to Montgomery County to make something sound good, and then like everybody's saying, how can you compare Montgomery County to Baltimore City? Baltimore City's roads, your hot, your simulators fall off your tow trucks, your dollys have to be secured with straps and locks and chains before you ride down the road and it'll fall off the truck. So it's, it's, it's really not fair to compare the insurance, everything else, the, the, what the toll it takes on our trucks. And all the other fees that have went up, everybody's already said it a hundred times, so we already know that, but I don't know, you know, where, where the numbers are coming from to compare us to anything. And also, what else I wanted to say before, I'm sorry. And, and for Mr. Dorsey, like I said before, for him to do this, I don't know why he's, just keeps picking on the towing industry. It's only eleven of us, twelve, ten, whatever, it's only ten of us, I mean, we, we gave twenty-five percent of our cap. Gave it to them, to said, here, we, we, we're gonna help you and the public. Back in the day when everything was going a lot better, we did it. Now, instead of honoring us and saying we're good guys and everything, it's like, now let's take from this, take from that, take from this, cut your hours. Forest Patrol, you, you have a, you know, three hundred plus homicide city, you can't cut back on, on regulation. You can't cut back, you can't make property managers go out there and say, hey, you know, come here and tow this car, and then they say, oh, she, she called my car and I'm gonna get her, and then her car is keyed the next day or she has four flats. And we can all probably bring a property manager to the next meeting to, to tell you that that's happened to their car when they had a car called in. That should have been towed. So, I mean, that's, that's another issue, so I, I don't know. But the, um, also, we've, one other thing I forgot to say, we found, we have also solved a, a homicide with our truck cameras. It was about two years ago. Our truck camera, three hundred and sixty degree truck camera, witnessed a, a SUV pull up and kill two young African Americans, one about nineteen, one about twenty-one, jumped back in the truck and took off in front, and our truck cameras, which were seized by homicide, solved, wanted, uh, solved this homicide about five months later. So, you know, we're, we're patrolling, we're out here, we're regulating, we're doing our job, we're taking the heat for the management, the, the owners, everybody. To make them have to call, you know, vehicles in in Baltimore City or authorize every tow is just, is just helping the people that are illegally parking, the violators, more time and more leverage to park. And just do more wrong, that's all it's doing, and it's just giving them a little pass to say, hey, you know, we're not gonna get towed because Ms. Smith has to call it in, that's, that's the rules now. All right, well, she's in Florida, or what if they're on a Zoom meeting, how are they gonna take the call to, to tow a car? They're on a Zoom meeting like we are right now and their phone's going off, but they're not answering it, but there's a car that needs to be towed, well, okay, never mind, they're not answering. Why should they have to deal with that on their private property if, and if to get a vehicle towed? But let's just, I'll leave it at this, I would say table this, let us get some kind of task force together and work together and make it better and, and we all come to an agreeance on what, what we're doing. But this is definitely too many things on here that just don't seem like it's fair, definitely for the towers. And the public, I mean, I don't think it's fair to them either, they're the ones getting, the public, the private uh property owners, they're not getting a fair shake at this. It's only helping the violators. But that's it, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Um, the next up will be Gordon. Gordon, do you have testimony?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I thank you very much for having me, Mr. Yitzhak and the rest of the council and everybody else on here. Um, I'm gonna keep it very short because everything's already been testified to. Um, Mr. Joe Walter, our representative, I think he did a wonderful job today, he uh, he got just about every point out I could, I could have said. So I'm not gonna waste the uh, the council and everybody else's time with that. But I will say this, I think the, the, the main points that we have to look at with the fee schedule is this, and it's already been testified to today. That the city, as the state already says, the local municipalities doubled or caught whatever, okay, well, our local municipality is Baltimore City. The city has been testified to already is only, is open less than a third of the hours that we're open. Less than a third. We're open three times as much during the week, weekends extra and holidays. Every single second of the year, we have to have a live person in our office that we have to pay to sit here and redeem a car immediately upon being towed. And that's been going on for, for many years. Um, so how can we, how can we get paid the same thing as the local municipality if we're doing three times the work? Or staying up more, more than three times the hours. You know, that's, that's my main uh hit point, I wanna hit on that, I think, uh, like I said, Mr. Joe Walter hit every other point I could possibly say uh about the credit cards, you know, um. You know, I think that uh, I, I think, I think the credit card thing is, is good, you know, people should be able to use credit cards. Um, uh, you know, or cash, at least two major credit cards. Um, the, I wanna uh step uh, go to the storage fee here for a second. I wanna, with the storage thing, I don't know why nobody's really bringing this out as, as much as I want to, I, I travel a lot, I've been all over this country, I've been all over the world. And I can honestly say, and I wanna see if anybody can, can uh, can, can correct me, I've never seen storage anywhere in the world. Not Hawaii, which is United States, of course, not in any state in this country as low as ours is in Baltimore City. Fifteen dollars a day is ridiculous, I mean, Baltimore County's thirty-five. And Little County, which my partner just said, uh, which does charge three fifty for impounds, they're the capital of our, of our uh state. They are where all the state laws are made. If we're gonna follow anybody, let's follow our next door neighbor, Anne Arundel County, or Baltimore County. Baltimore County, thirty-five dollars a day storage. You know, what happens here a lot is people get towed, their tractor trailers get towed to our yard and they, when they see it's only fifteen dollars a day, they leave their truck here for three or four days tying our whole yard up, know it's cheaper than anywhere else you can park in Baltimore. So there's, there's, there really is a lot of things that we have to uh, to handle. When the, when the Alcorn mayor last year, when, when, when he said uh, in his, in his opinion, when he vetoed the bill, he said, he said, even though the uh towers uh, you know, get a bad rap, he said, they should get a seat at the table. And that was his, his wording in, in the veto, and, and that's, and that's uh, we've never gotten a seat at the table. All people hear from, like Mr. Dorsey, he hears from uh, you know, a few people in, in society that get towed from fire lanes or whatever, and the first thing they say is, hey, we uh, they, they were, they were riding around like uh predators. Predatory towing all over the parking lot. When you've got three thousand properties, like some of our companies do, to patrol, you don't have time to uh sit there and go around one parking lot all day, it's called patrol, you ride through, you see a car in a fire lane, you take your pictures of it and you go. And, and talking about transparency, I tried to get, I, I think I got most of the towers on with me now. About eight years ago, we put uh state of the art, the most expensive cameras money could buy. Uh, audio and video on all of our tow trucks, four-way cameras, front, back, side, side. Because so many things were said over the years about our drivers doing this, running somebody's foot over, calling them a name, doing this, doing that, picking up the car with them in the car and all this stuff. Well, they still say it, but when I show them the video when they come here, they changed their opinion very quickly. That costs us six thousand dollars a truck, but let me tell you something, it saves us a hundred thousand dollars in lawyer fees a year in defending ourselves with false claims. So we are, and I've told Mr. Dorsey this before, I've told the board, I've told everybody. We are as, as transparent, all of our companies, as, as you could possibly, you can walk in our office anytime, look at our books. What you guys, the board has the right to do, look at our books, go through everything, see what we charge, see what we do. And I've also extended to the board when Mr. Baker was the one, that you come in anytime you want, if, if somebody accuses one of my drivers of, of circling around, doing whatever, come in here, I'll pull the camera up from that truck and let you watch between the hours that you're saying this alleged incident happened, and I'll show you that it's not true. So like Mr. Joe Walter said, we get a really bad rap out there because people don't like getting towed for breaking the rules and laws. So we get a better, same way the police. I'm sure if there was a board that could go after the police, nobody's happy when they get a speeding ticket, nobody's happy, you know, when you get, so they, so they, so they, they make all these accusations. That's why we have become, you know, and I, I hope all the other towers follow, putting video, audio cameras in their tow trucks to show twenty-four hours a day when our trucks run, what we are actually doing. And like I said, I'm not gonna do a lot of time, I know Mr. Parrish has uh more important things to say than I have, but thank you very much for hearing me. Did they hear me?
Yeah, thank you so much.
Was I heard?
Yes, you were heard, every word.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your testimony. Next up is uh Charles Parrish. Charles, go ahead.
How we doing and um?
Thank you for your patience.
Oh, no, it's been uh very uh, 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 if I may say, I, I, I went to the military at the age of eighteen, I'm a lifetime Baltimore Cityan. I grew up down in South Baltimore on Hamburg in between Charles and Light. Got out of the military, was a Baltimore City firefighter, got injured, got into towing. For the last thirty-plus years, this is what I've been doing. For the last twenty-plus years, I've been working on the legislation and, and presently now still, the Towing Recovery Professionals of Maryland Legislative Chairman. And throughout the state, along with the state, you know, including the municipalities, I helped with legislation because of the nature of this complaint-driven industry that we're in. Nobody, nobody, including myself, has on my schedule, oh, let me get towed today. Or let me have a flat tire, or let me have an accident, or let me not pay the bank so they can repo my car, nobody puts that on their schedule. So it's a complaint-driven industry. So what we try to do specifying is specifically dealing with trespassing is first off, it's the property owner, the management company, that's the priority. When this started, and I must say, Baltimore City, Baltimore County and Charles County, the state law was because of this. I know I've heard Montgomery County and other areas, but through my twenty-one years, Baltimore City was and is the model. The tow board is the model for this state and throughout the country, I get calls from Arizona, New Jersey, Massachusetts, I get calls. And they wanna know why is it working, well, it was working because together between the city council, property management associations such as uh Mr. Grayson who represents MMHA, IRAM, which is a commercial properties, um, the police department, finance company. All of them sit on this board, towing rep, a public, a citizen at large sit on this board and thanks to Mr. Henry in June of twenty-eleven, he did a bill that put a property owner on that board, management company. So you have all these opinions and then you had towers who could sit in a room, disagree, understand, listen. When Mr. uh Councilman, I'm sorry, don't, don't mean any insult, when Councilman Dorsey came four years ago and I thank him for what he's done. When he was on that board, he was very honest, he got thrown into something he knew nothing about. He got thrown into something that was not gonna be popular, no matter which way he went. He did some things for the towing industry that I'm grateful for, got rid of useless training, although some may like it. Knowing how to be a customer service or knowing how to tow a vehicle is two different things. So he has done some great things for the towing industry while he was on the board. When we first talked, his goal was to take the police towing and the trespass towing and make one board. Since this bill was came out, and two years, a year and a half ago, he had brought it up, he had brought up that he got thrown into it. And that ninety-eight percent, this is a quote from him, ninety-eight percent of the towing complaints were unjustified, meaning that the towers did what they were told to do by the pro, property owners. Now, is two percent okay? No, it's not. I've never agreed with it, the board has never agreed, we have suspended, we have removed, we have indefinitely removed the company, that's back when Mr. Rice sat on that board. The board took action. When training was required, we didn't require, we didn't allow ones where you didn't even have to be present. So I mean, the board, which I have not heard since this bill came out, there's no reference to the board. The board has, is what has kept telling over the last four years, and I gotta say, one of the uh amendments that he was adding was that the board meet quarterly again, it should, it's supposed to. We shouldn't be waiting for a complaint from a citizen to attack things that are going wrong. We shouldn't have to wait to update what rules and regulations. We shouldn't have to wait to update what rules and regulations. Tomorrow, I have a hearing at Baltimore County. Baltimore County is price on the pricing. Right now, they're at two hundred and sixty-five. As a matter of fact, real quick, if I can, there was some wrong facts given. Hartford County and, and Arundel County have been for many years now, their fee, because I was on those committees from two thousand nine, have been at three hundred and fifty dollars. Their storages are twenty-five dollars a day. As far as Baltimore County, they rose at forty-five dollars two years ago from two thousand and two. They're presently at two hundred and sixty-five dollars, but the storage is thirty-five dollars a day. And just so we're understanding the fees, because I really don't, the fees is not the main issue in this. Nobody wants to pay for a speed ticket. Nobody wants to pay for a gallon of milk that's five dollars. Nobody wants to pay for a car that they didn't ask to be towed. Nobody does. So, but in trespass towing, at three hundred and fifty dollars, which is the max that we've all agreed on, that can be put on our license, our client still gets to dictate what we want to charge. If I have a client such as HABC who says, Charlie, I only want my residents charged two hundred dollars, but anybody that's not a resident, I don't care what you're charging. Well, of course, my license says three fifty, so I can't go above that. Because the board does approve our license every year. So the maximum fee that's allowed is just that. It's allowed. It doesn't mean that our clients are gonna let us charge that. The main reason, and just to get off of that, but you, you have that fee, the first twelve hours, we can't charge storage. Even though we have to be open twenty-four seven, we're not allowed to charge storage, first twelve hours. The administration fee, we can't charge for seventy-two hours. Can't charge. It's in the law. When you're, when you're, when you're going to... I don't want to repeat a lot of this stuff because mainly, uh, when we're comparing apples to oranges, to me, Montgomery County is way behind us. In twenty-twelve, they were forced to follow what we've always been doing. And that's something I'd like to go over in our rules and regulations, which I have sent to all council members, which are in play and which do need updating. But these words, patrolling, are defined. Means a service where tow trucks move about in or canvass an area where current clients are located. So long as patrolling is a requested service as per the contract, no tower ever in Baltimore City has been allowed to decide what gets towed. The property owner must have it in writing in a contract, what they want towed. And to the customer, consumer protection, Ms. Marcelina brought up, in twenty-twelve, we added that pictures must be taken. That took the he and, the he say, she say out of it. The consumer protection, other thing was the drop fee. What it cost me to get to that car is ninety percent of the cost. Bringing it back, all the work's done. So the fifty percent was also a consumer protection. So the pictures and the drop fee were added in, not disputed. Never have. It's also, by the way, in the city rules and regulations. Predatory towing occurs when a tower waits for a driver to exit the vehicle, then proceeds to tow the car away. When Sergeant Clark used to sit on the board, he used to do, uh, what do they call that? Um, I'm lost for words. When they, you know, uh, uh, when they sit and wait to see if you do something wrong. Um, but he would sting, sting operations. He would do sting operations. I know, I was part of them a couple of times. He would go around and do all the companies. When we found a company that did it, they suspended them. They got rid of them, and they should. The last one is spotters. This is also in the state law. Are those persons employed for the primary task of reporting the presence of an unauthorized parked vehicles for the purpose of towing or removal and impounding? Like I said, this is in rules and regulations under the city, and it's also in the state law. A spotter is a third party. It cannot be the tow truck driver. In Montgomery County, prior to twenty-twelve, spotting was legal. Even today, it was said about, well, the driver should go, call the property owner, and tell them about the violation. Well, guess what? That driver just now became a spotter. A driver's job is to tow a vehicle contracted by the owner of the property to remove. Period. The... These definitions are not things that I made up. These are things that have been in the rules and regulations. The, the, the overseeing that we have is enormous. This is the first time since twenty-seventeen that I've never seen the law department at our meetings. Matter of fact, I can't even remember the last meeting we had. And we have license applications in, which I'm wondering who's gonna be approving them. But this bill, I love the credit cards. I do. Especially during today's times. I think the credit cards is well overdue. I think there should be a procedure, though. I don't think we should just have to accept any credit card. I think there should be a, a consumer protection for the merchant as well. I, I, I like the fact of the, uh, the board meeting quarterly. I think it should be required. And I think the board should change every four years to get some fresh ideas, to get some fresh things. Baltimore County, it's in their law that we meet annually to discuss fees, rules, and regulations. That meeting is tomorrow. I think the city needs to do that instead of putting a hard cap into the language, because it would take forever. I don't know what the right fee is. Fair and reasonable to a businessman, fair and reasonable to a third person, fair and reasonable to the person that got towed, you're gonna get three different answers. So that's where this task force or this study should be conducted so that all of that input is put together, so that we can make a sound decision. I wish that Councilman Dorsey would have put some of the things he had in his bill before into this, to, to put the police and the trespass towers together. I think this city is way better than anybody, that anybody in this meeting today has compared us to. And I'm not being biased. I just, we have gone up and above. You're never gonna get a hundred percent. I don't care what politicians, lawyers, judges, firefighters, policemen, grocery store owners, you're never gonna get a hundred percent perfect. There's always gonna be a bad apple. But that's what this is for. And if we ignore the authority of the board and we try to overstep the board to which this bill never went to the board, and that's what's happening here. I, I think it's more of a nightmare for the property owner, most importantly. It benefiting the trespasser, the violator, yes, that should be considered. That's called consumer protection. But it should not take a stand in front of the property owner and the tower. I know the time is running out. Like I said, in Baltimore County, just to give different examples, we did one point five as the percentage. And Arundel County, Hartford County, they do two times. Municipalities such as Howard County were presently working with the police department. Their fees are from the nineteen nineties. Um, Montgomery and Prince George's County, and I have many towers in my association that are in those regions, it's a different apple. And in no way would I ever say, oh, I wish I was from Montgomery instead of Baltimore City. No, I'm from Baltimore. And I'm proud to be from Baltimore City. And this bill should represent what makes Baltimore City better, safer than come park into. I noticed before that PABC said that they don't, that it's complaint-driven. Our whole industry is complaint-driven. Our whole industry is. By removing the monitoring part, you're now subjecting that property owner who may live on the property to abuse. And believe me, over my thirty years, between the gunshots, the bricks in the head, Mercy Hospital hired me because the security guard that they had on their lot over on East Side was killed because somebody wouldn't move his car. It, it's, it's that one incident. It's that one incident that you don't want to do this. You really don't. Um, of course, you're gonna do what's best for Baltimore, and we're gonna have to play by those rules. But I would really wish that this committee and the city council and Mr. Dorsey and the Tow Board and MMHA and all involved in this could meet, sit down, and track out everything, and actually, let's address the rules and regulations. Let's see what needs fixing there, because that's what we do. I thank you for your time, and, um, everybody stay healthy.
All right, thinking, I have a, just a quick question for you. Um, you had mentioned earlier on about, um, how ninety-eight percent of the claims, you know, ended up not being actual substantiated. Do you know how many claims have been substantiated? Uh, like in this past year or in a previous year?
I do know that this past year, we haven't had a board meeting yet. Uh, it was only virtual. Our last board meeting in twenty, um, nineteen, uh, which we had, uh, down on Guilford, there was a bulletin that was given out to which complaints and then justified. At that time, there was only two complaints that were justified.
And how many complaints were there?
Uh, there was well over forty-some complaints, citywide.
So really, so it's just two of them that, I mean, obviously, nobody's happy when they get towed, so certainly people complain, but the fact that there's only two of them, that's a lot lower number than, uh, I think than people would expect. Um, so that's, that's good to know. So thank, thank you for that. Um, we'll move on to the next, uh, person testifying. That is Robert, uh, Robert Seim?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do you have testimony?
Yes, sir. I, I appreciate the time and thank county council for sitting in and listening to me. That belong. Uh, Montgomery County and Baltimore City are two different worlds. You got three hundred and, I think, three hundred and eighty thousand, uh, three hundred, I could see is three hundred and eighty, uh, people living in that county, and you got over six hundred thousand living in Baltimore City area. Um, it's a big cry and a big problem. And different areas have different views. You got a small congestion area with very limited parking. People need to be able to control their parking by permits. Uh, if you don't have that, you have anarchy. And then you have plenty of people that, as, um, numerous people have said, drugs going on, dropping off cars, doing illegal activity. Then you got your business community where the alcohol is being sold. Is the city gonna take responsibility for people parking on someone's lot and getting into an accident? Insurance, yeah. The business owner has insurance, but it doesn't cover that. It won't cover that. They'll fight it for years. The towing industry monitors that. They take care of the issues with the drunk people coming out of the bars. Getting, so when their car's towed, they don't, they can't drive. I mean, I, I'm beating around the bush, but the property owners have to worry about themselves and their, uh, property. So they need to be able to monitor it after hours. Where he comes up with, uh, two o'clock to six o'clock, that's after the bars are closed. It gives me to wonder, what's the dr- drive behind this? Monitoring the patrol hours? Nah, nah, we can't deal with that. We, we have to be able, the, the business owner has to be able to be sure that their properties are safe. For the tenants or the business partners they have around them. That's all I gotta say. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you very much. Um, next up is, uh, JJ. JJ, do you have any testimony? JJ, do you have any testimony? It's not. All right, um, last one I have here on the list is Douglas Kingdom. Douglas, do you have any testimony?
Uh, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, well, um, uh, good afternoon, and thank you very much for permitting me to add commentary to this, uh, this hearing. Um, so I am a, the owner of a property management company, Commercial Logic, and we manage, well, it's a brokerage and property manager, and we manage property in the Baltimore, uh, Baltimore City. Currently, we manage a shopping center, uh, which is Wallbrook Junction, and we also manage an office building. And we've recently managed, uh, another office building. But, um, the, the two parts of the legis- proposed legislation that gave me some heartburn would be section twenty-two dash fifteen, um, the prohibited acts, um, where, you know, it's a service, you know, uh, you, as an agent or an owner, you can't monitor, may not monitor patrol, otherwise surveil any property for the purpose of identifying unauthorized parked vehicles. So the problem with that is, if you advertise an apartment building with parking, one, one space per apartment, and then people in the neighborhood decide they want to park there, the, the challenge is, that's an amenity that is consumed by an unauthorized parker that you can't offer to your tenants anymore because of some, it's difficult to enforce. And the challenge with that is a word gets out that although you have a surface parking lot, you have illegal parkers and, or unauthorized parkers, and you really, the parking that's in your lease as a tenant, you really don't get to use because it's typically filled up. So, so that's, that's a problem. And I view that, I view that as an unauthorized taking where you actually devalue someone's property um, because the, the apartment units or office space is more, or retail space is more difficult to lease because word has it that you don't enforce parking. And you can't get parking close to your facility or, or, or where you're supposed to be parking. So that's a view that is an unauthorized taking, uh, that's, that's actually prohibited, I believe, by the constitution. Then the other thing is the, um, prohibiting the hours of towing. I have no idea where those hours came from, two AM to seven AM. I recently, uh, had a car towed. Uh, guy drove it onto the parking lot. It, it emptied its transmission fluid all over the par- parking lot. The guy pulled the tags, disappeared. And, um, as soon as I learned about it, I, I called the towing company that we are, we have under contract, and they have signs all around it, all around the lot, and we got the car towed away. So what am I supposed to do? Try to track down the guy? Run the VIN number and call up, you know, MVA and, and beg them, plead them to give me the VIN number, call the police and have them run the VIN number? Meanwhile, it's, it's leaking transmission fluid all over the, all over the parking lot. So, so that I view that as, uh, just an, an unusual step that as a property owner, um, I don't want to have to go through. And, and I've been dealing with unauthorized parking literally back to nineteen sixty-eight, when my mother owned properties around the city, Madison Avenue, Harlem Avenue, just all over the place. And people just park in your, in your garage. And despite the, the towing signs, you know, they would just park there. So I think it's an undue burden to have me chase somebody down. If you don't want your vehicle towed, don't park on my property. I don't mind the city regulating something that has to do with the street. Great, regulate the parking on the street. But I think that you almost can't regulate parking on my property because it's, you'd have to compensate me for it. Because I think it devalues my property when you do that. And as a property manager, I, I don't want to have to track down anybody. And, and how would I do that? I Google them? Like the guy who just parked in my lot. He took the tags. I have no idea who it is. I have no idea where he lives. He probably doesn't have a stable address. So what do I do to track the guy down? So anyway, those are the, those are the two things. And as a property manager, you want the problem gone. And if the guy who owns a vehicle doesn't want his vehicle towed, don't park on my property. Now, I have the burden of making sure I hire a towing company that's licensed. I make sure I have to comply with the signage regulations and things like that. But if you don't want your vehicle towed, do not park on a property that I own or that I manage. Because then you become my headache, and I don't want you to have my headache. I don't want you to be a headache. I want to get up in the morning and not be bothered by unauthorized parkers. So that's, that's, that's my issue from, from the property management perspective, okay? And thank you very much for the opportunity to, uh, to testify.
All right, thank you very much. Um, I think we covered everybody. Um, and gave everybody, um, time to say, um, all of their testimony. Um, if for some reason I missed you, which I've been going in order, uh, feel free to put in the message box right now, but we are out of time and clearly, uh, from this discussion and the back and forth we heard, uh, there needs to be greater discussion on this. Um, and so I will not be voting it out today. I think we need to schedule an additional, uh, work session to, to go through some of these items. I appreciate everybody participating. Um, and for now, uh, we will be in, uh, recess until, uh, we announce a new date. Thank you very much.